All right, this is Board of Finance regular meeting Thursday, February fifteenth, six oh three. This meeting will be conducted in part with electronic equipment, municipal law, all participants. This meeting will be made available on the town's website pursuant to state law. If you're attending remotely, please remember to mute your microphone unless you are speaking. Anyone participating remotely should state their name and title if applicable at the outset of each occasion that such person is speaking. All votes taken during which any members of this bodies are participating remotely, shall we take them by roll call? Unless the vote is unanimous, the chat feature will not be utilized nor considered during this meeting. So we officially called the order. We have Steve Kirsch.
Present.
We have Nixon Aminis.
Present.
Rebecca is not here, right?
Correct.
Correct. Samantha Espino.
Present.
Catherine Stoffer, not here?
Correct, she's not here.
Okay, we have Ron Bonavoski.
I am here.
Heidi Mead.
Here.
We have Frank Duchess.
Here, Mike.
And I thought I saw Deb on the phone.
I'm here.
Perfect.
Yeah, and Terry will not be here tonight, and Joe will likely be late.
Okay, so we'll see if he makes it, but we'll announce him at that time. All right, approval of the special meeting minutes and voting record for January twenty-fourth.
Steve Kirsch, I move to approve the special meeting minutes and voting record for January twenty-five, twenty twenty-four.
Hey, Mike, just one comment. I did submit a written report last month. And yet I see in the report that it said no report from Town Treasurer. So I don't know if that just got missed? And whether it makes any difference to it or not.
Probably gets missed, and we should, we can, we could certainly add it to the record.
Go over it.
Yeah, it was in the packet.
It was in the packet, so we should just amend the minutes.
We should just amend the minutes to reflect it was in the packet, right?
Okay.
Anybody, did we have a second? I didn't know if we got a second.
I'll second.
Thank you so much. Any other discussion?
None here.
Hearing none. Any opposed? Then we pass unanimously with that amendment. All right, communications, we have no first electmen, so that's.
Well, I was gonna, yeah.
You want to cover for him?
Yeah, I was gonna, you know.
Take his spot.
Mr. Temperance.
I did mention, I did tell him I would, you know, obviously, his budget got presented to Town Council on February eighth.
February twelfth.
It got presented, it got delivered to Town Council on February eighth.
Okay.
Okay, pursuant to chart. So, um. I just, I don't know if anyone's had, you know, if everyone's had a chance to look at it. I was gonna give you a quick summary.
Sure, that'd be great.
So, the, on the municipal side, came in at thirty-one million, four thirty-seven, one sixty-nine. Point six nine percent increase. Board of Ed was seventy-one million, three thirty-seven, six fifty-nine, a five point four percent increase. Total operating was one oh two, seven seventy-four, eight twenty-eight, a three point eight eight percent increase. And then there was contingency and other appropriations of just under nine hundred thousand. So the total expenditure budget was one oh three, six seventy-one, four one four. For a three point nine three percent increase. Now, some other quick points on the budget. There was fund balance used of two point nine million, two million nine fifty, actually. However, four hundred of that was to cover contingency. So, so the hard use of fund balance, you know, or the fund balance excluding contingency was two million, five fifty.
So very similar to last year.
Very similar to last, slight, slight decline, actually. So now, to sum up the projected mill rate. Which, as you guys know, doesn't get set by you until after the referendum, but it's projected right now at thirty-eight point three one. Which is a two point zero three percent increase over last year. And, you know, the perselectment reductions on the municipal side totaled seven ninety-two, and on the Board of Ed's side totaled one million, one eighty-seven. So that's, that's pretty much the, the quick Reader's Digest view of the budgets.
And that. We still are expecting lower insurance rates on the board, so that might offset that cut by about.
Yes, I mean, those are still to be determined. We're still negotiating, actually, on the town side and on the board side to, to lower the health insurance costs.
When will we typically get those in, just so everybody is clear? Is that April typically?
Well, we're, we're, we kind of, you know, our. You know, our, our insurance consultants, actually, have, we've, we've gone out and gotten prices on both the town and board side. So we're repricing it, Mike, looking for new, you know. Townside, you know, it's, it's still a work in progress. It's, on the, on the board side, they're actually part of a block with a couple other Boards of Ed and, and towns. And right now, it looks like there might be a savings there, which could be in the four fifty to five hundred thousand dollar range. On the town side, we are, we are, we're standalone, we're, we're looking at either entering that block with the Board of Ed. Or we're looking at other options right now. Everything's on the table right now, though.
Got it. So we're back looking at the state plan, I'm assuming.
A state plan is back on the table.
Right.
You know, a month ago when this started, I'm like, gee, what, what kind of questions is Mike gonna ask?
At least we're predictable.
Yeah, so, and, and look, it was, the, the pricing came in not that great, so we, we really had to put everything back on.
Not that great, how about horrible?
Horrible.
I think Steve, I think Steve nailed it on that one.
Yes, he did. And I, I don't think we're the only municipality in that, in that.
No, from what I'm reading, it's a typical problem, for sure.
Yeah. Well, and at the Board of Ed meeting, the superintendent has, has made the point on a couple of meetings that, that other towns are at least as bad, if not worse than we had. You know, penciled in, whatever you want to call us.
Yeah.
So, yeah, we're, we're, we're not in this alone.
Wow. What's the plan year for, is it line up with the fiscal year?
So, the other thing I wanted to mention, and, and Mike, I discussed this with you a little bit earlier, was trying to get some joint meeting dates for the.
Yes, with the Board of Ed, with the Town Council.
Yeah, so, um. The first selectman is giving his presentation on February twenty-sixth, so we were looking, you know, sometime after that. Now, Mike, you said you had conflicts the balance of that week.
That week, I'm in my, in Florida, and I have events at night, so I couldn't even sneak in.
So the.
But I was clear on the first and second of those dates, more.
Uh, I think it's the fourth and fifth.
Fourth and, I keep doing the wrong month, I did that again.
Yeah, so early the, the Town Council Chair was hoping to maybe have it either Monday, the fourth, or Tuesday, the fifth. Monday, the fourth, is a Board of Education meeting. Which starts at seven o'clock. The thought was, if we start the joint meeting at six o'clock. And then have the public hearing at six thirty. Usually, the joint meeting isn't more than twenty minutes to a half hour. And maybe schedule the Town Council's public hearing on the budget for six thirty.
That would work for me, I don't know about anybody else.
Yeah, I mean, I'd be an attendee at the Board of Ed, so, so that's fine. So they're not looking to do the public hearing the same night on the twenty-sixth. Because when we, when we left the Town Council chambers on Monday night, that was what the conversation was.
My answer.
So that's fine.
Yeah, I think they're having another public hearing, zoning.
They have, there's a, there's a tax abatement public hearing that they need.
Yes.
For some Stevenson lumber property, but I'm not sure when.
Yeah, so, so the.
Okay.
Yeah, so the answer is no.
No, okay.
They were looking to do it after that.
So, so for me, either, either Monday or Tuesday is fine.
Yeah.
The fourth or the fifth.
So did you guys wanna, you want me to, because I, I could certainly go back to the, the Town Council Chair and.
Yeah, you want me to call him, I'll call him, you wanna call him, it doesn't matter to me.
Sure, so why don't, maybe I can touch base with you, I'll give him his, do you have his contact information?
I do.
Sorry.
Okay, you're available, right?
Yes. Yeah, my, my preference would actually be Monday, because I have a.
Mine too.
A dentist appointment, if it ran long, I'd be in trouble.
And I think his preference would be the earlier, the better, because.
Yeah, Monday would be good.
Yeah.
Six o'clock is good.
Okay. So, that was pretty much all I had to speak on for the first selectmen. I did tell Joe, if he wasn't here yet, I would just say, you know, we, we've met internally on the Board of Ed's side. To, to start working through how, you know. Exploring various options on, on how to handle the, the, you know, the budget adjustment. So it's, it's, you know. It's, it's, I think, creating conversation, you know, it's creating conversation that's, I think it's healthy conversation, you know. Exploring different options, and, you know, we know we're only in the process, and, you know, the, the. With the health insurance still number, not final.
Yeah, I mean, that could make a big difference if it's.
It could make, yeah.
Five hundred range, right. Could take half your problem away.
Yeah, so, but, but he has met with the, the principals and the Director of Facilities and, and Paul Course, the Director of IT, to. You know, everyone's going back with, you know, to, you know, look at different options. So it's, the wheel's in motion.
Awesome.
That, that, that's a big cut, given how much of the increase is contractual. As reported during the workshop, so that's, that's what's scary to me.
Yeah, I mean, if we don't have that insurance pickup, that's gonna be not good. But let's get all the numbers together, and then we'll put our heads together, as usual. All right, Ron. A lot of this communication I know was in there, right?
Yeah, so when you, your packets, the, the required communication from the orders, which kind of just summarizes everything. Having said, you know, Samantha had requested a copy of the audit. It is on the town website, I did email it, you know. There's an electronic version I've emailed to the board.
Thank you.
And there are, I can, you know, we get limited hard copies, but I, I do have enough if everyone wants a hard copy. I only ask that if you, if you don't think you're gonna use it, it's just gonna go in a closet and collect us not to take it.
That's why I don't like closets.
I, I, I can always ask for more from the orders. We get, we get about ten copies, I have to, you know, there's pursuant to state statute, one's on.
Town clerk.
One, one's down with the town clerk. So we have nine available, if, you know. If you guys want copies, there, there are copies.
I can, I can do electronic, that's fine.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's fine. I mean, we, we have a. And I can always ask for more. I've never had to do that, but no. So I can hand those out after the meeting. And that's, that's pretty much it, Mike.
All right.
Communicating on my part.
Exactly, you're covering all the hats. Public participation, I'm assuming I don't see anybody there?
There's no public here.
In here, and I don't see anybody on the phone, so, look, we're good there. New business, motion to approve the purchase of new pavilion at Wolf Park.
Okay, Steve Kirsch, I have a resolution. I'll, I'll now read the following resolution and ask for its adoption. Resolved that the following budget transfers be approved pursuant to Chapter Eight, Section Seven G of the Town Charter. Through the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Eighty thousand dollars from the Parks and Recreation Department Program Fund. And eighty thousand dollars to Capital Reserve. And that the funds be committed to the Wolf Park Pavilion Project. As requested by Mithy Oro's Director of Parks and Recreation, in her letter of February twelfth, twenty twenty-four. This expenditure was approved by the Parks and Recreation Commission at their, at their February fifth, twenty twenty-four meeting.
We have a second.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion, questions, comments?
So the only question that I had asked in an email was, since the actual quote was for eighty thousand, two twenty-five, you know, where's the other two twenty-five? And I'm just assuming they'll take it out of other funds, and, and this gives them the, the bulk of it. Their resolution in the meeting was something to, you know, to contribute to or to, to cover most of, something like that, so.
Got it.
I'm, I'm fine with it not, you know, not matching up.
Exactly, to the dollar, right. It's a good pickup, though. Anybody else? All right, hearing none, any opposed? Hearing none, unanimously. All right, review of financial twenty twenty-four reports, general fund budgets, as of January thirty-first. Want anything you want to call out here, or hurry?
The, the one thing I want to call, and it's actually on the revenue side, we're, we're tracking. And, and overall, it's, it's not a concern, I think, I think we're gonna be able to more than cover it on the revenue side unless Deb. Unless Deb is gonna be able to hit budget this year. But, um, the, the one number that's, the one number that's a concern is, is Building Department, Building Fees. We're, we're tracking a little light. There, there is a lot in the hopper. It just, when they put the budget together last year, some of the projects that they thought they would have started receiving building permits on, they have not yet. But it's, it's, and whether they received it, you know, whether the building permits are, are, you know. Submitted by the end of the fiscal year or not, they're, you know, they're not sure, but they're gonna track a little light. At best guess at this point, they're probably gonna come in about a hundred, a hundred and ten thousand dollars light.
Do you know what those projects are?
Um, they ran through them with me, there's a couple, I think it's one's over, a pond near over on twenty-five. Um, there was one, there were two or three that were, were called out, though.
Okay.
Um, there's another one on South, uh, South Main Street, right on the Tumbly Line. And they feel a bit, they're gonna happen, they're just, you know.
Right, okay.
Delayed.
Delayed, yeah.
And the delays from like, you know, the, the project side, not like any, like issues with permitting or.
No, no, the project side, yeah, so. Could it be interest rates or economic driven, or maybe the contractor has another project going on, you know.
The community's giving them guff, because they don't want the project.
Yeah, I don't, yeah.
Well, I was gonna say, I don't know that it's any of that.
I didn't hear that.
That's, that, that was sort of my question.
Yeah.
So, I did, I did spill, I spoke with both the. You know, directly, I don't know what Bill's, unfortunately, Bill Holesworth, I also spoke with the. Chief Building Official.
I wouldn't be surprised if financing wouldn't slow things down a little bit, right?
That, that was my thought.
That wouldn't surprise me, because everybody thinks rates are gonna be cheaper in the summer, and if you're, you know, working on a long-term project, then I could see them doing that.
Yeah. Yeah, so that was, that was the only thing I wanted to, you know, call out on the, uh, town side. Board side, yeah, board side, nothing is.
Any more special ed?
At this point, I've got a, what's that?
Any more significant moves in Special Ed?
Um, at this point, Mike, no, I mean, there, you know, with each passing month, I, I know there, you know. They've, they've, they've had some, you know, increase in, in enrollment, you know, in the high cost end. So, look, it's, it's something that's always gonna be, that's always gonna be fluid, you know?
Right.
So we did get a little bit more money than we budgeted for.
Still on excess cost.
Excess cost.
It actually hasn't been received yet, it'll receive.
It was recorded, we were notified.
Yes.
How much was that spread?
So. If you, if you look in the packet, it's, so we should be receiving somewhere in the seven forty to seven fifty range. In excess cost funds. We had only, we had, we had budgeted significantly less than that, just under, I think, six hundred thousand. Now, the, the problem is, is the expense side goes up, went up too. In order to, you know, get reimbursed those funds, so it's, it's, you're, you're chasing your tail a little bit. We are getting more funds, so. But if you look, it, it's, it's on page two of the budget report for the Board of Ed. So it has a fund activity statement, it's page two, you'll see about a, two-thirds of the way down, tuition public. Is, is showing a deficit balance of negative eight hundred and thirty-eight thousand. That'll be offset by the excess cost grant, once it's received. So that, that deficit in that object will, will go down. You see that line item?
Yep.
About ten from the bottom, something like that.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah.
All right, tax collector.
Hello, I gave you, I took another report out the other day, you know, more up to date from, for February thirteenth. Just because. The January thirty-first didn't really reflect all the payments, because they have to postmark, and they had February first to also pay. So the February thirteenth, we're like, we're at, to budget, we're to ninety, 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 yeah. Can we get still print? Like ninety, almost ninety-nine percent to budget. And to the collectibles, we're at ninety-six, nine. So we're, we're doing very well. The reminder notices went out, and we are getting a lot of responses back for that. So I think our numbers are looking pretty good. A lot of properties, older properties have started selling again. So I think our back tax number will be fine for this year. Last year, we didn't make it quite, but this year, I'm hoping that some more properties will be paying off with the older properties that we had some issues with in the past. And that's it.
So, so Deb, in terms of letters going out, in terms of the quantity? Higher.
Four thousand letters.
Is that, and where does that rank compared to prior years?
Um, I don't remember in the past, but I, a lot of people forgot to pay their second halves this year, and I don't know if it's related to a lot of people moving from out of state and didn't understand the billing, you know, one bill with the two installments. But a lot of people who've been in town for years forgot to pay the second half, which I was really surprised, and they're like, oh, you always send out two notices, and I said, no, I've been here over thirty, you know, between me and Manny, it's been thirty years, and we never sent out two notices, so. I have no idea why people forgot this year, I.
So they're, they're contacting you and saying, okay, I'll, I'll catch it up right now, so.
Yeah, a lot of people are. Some people are having some financial difficulties or lost their jobs, but. I am not, I mean, there are a few who are saying that and are trying to make payments, you know, so they stay up on it, but. It's not like my concern from last year. I mean, I still have a lot of outstanding, and a lot of people may not have contacted me. But, you know, most of the people are paying and coming in.
Yeah, that, that's, that's really my, my question or concern, is, is, how, how do you feel about what you're seeing, so?
Yeah, because we're so close to, you know, where we're. I mean, it's only half a month, and my numbers are getting pretty much to what we budgeted. I mean, if we take into consideration what the state has given us, we're already a hundred percent what we budgeted, so I'm. But, I mean, that, I don't figure that, I just showed that on your reports, but we are, I think we're doing very well.
Okay.
End of the month will make a difference, and like, we give them two months to pay it up in current before we send it to a collection agency in April.
All right, thank you.
All right, Treasurer.
Couple of items, really kind of a rework of what was presented last month. But updating the numbers, right now, from an interest perspective, we're at a million, six thirty-eight against a budget of one, three. If I look at that, trying to look out another five months. The average we've been taking in over the first seven months was about two hundred and thirty-four thousand a month. Last month, we did a hundred and seventy-four. If I take that hundred and seventy-four, which is low end. We should come in somewhere between two four and two five, in, in terms of it, so hopefully that will make up the revenue shortfall. Yeah.
Thanks, Frank.
No problem. In February, very similar to January. We had two six-month, two million dollars worth of six-month T-bills mature. We rolled that over into a million dollars of a six-month T-bill, a million dollars of a twelve-month T-bill. And again, what that's doing is giving us a little bit of hedge against declining rates as we go forward. We also started at the first of the year with a plan to increase our treasury holdings by three million over the course of the year, which is two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a month. We made the first one in January, second one will be February. And again, as we look at those interest rates, the three-month is obviously better than the six, which is better than the twelve. But the mixture gives us a, a good combination and gives us a hedge against the future. Regarding budgets, which everybody's interested in. I did put together a, a little budget model to look at our, our interest revenue, which I gave to the first selectmen, which is in the plan, which is one point six million. The thing to be said about that is we know interest rates are going down, we don't know how fast and how deep. So the initial plan that I shared with Terry was dropping, and again, we're looking eighteen months out, right? Because we're starting in July. That interest rates by June would drop to four percent. And then two different scenarios, one where we're dropping by twenty-five basis point a month, the other where we're dropping by fifty basis points a month. We took the conservative estimate there, and that was the one-six that Terry used in the budget. I've done a little bit of playing with it, now that we have some more information. Where, if you look back in December, people were talking maybe six or seven rate cuts during the year. Starting in March, now it's, well, maybe we'll get two or three, starting in July. So I've done some remodeling, which says we probably have some room to move the revenue budget up. But what I will do is I will rerun that model before Board of Finance starts doing its final number. And then share that with you all before the final budget goes out.
So I have a question, do we talk, or get input from Devon? Can we contact them and, and, and ask them what they're seeing or what they're thinking about? Because we had that discussion with the Pension Commission.
What with rates?
Yeah.
I mean, her, her, I mean, she's, 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 she's our pension consultant.
Well, I know, but she, she.
Would she give us, I mean.
What their view.
We could certainly, I could certainly see what, what research is available from that, and yeah.
Yeah, just their feeling, because that was a, that was a question that I asked her, you know, at the end of the meeting, after we covered all the detail. And, and here, you know, will be a few months later, and I'd, I'd be interested to, to simply know what their outlook is. Because again, she said the same thing, fewer rates and maybe not as deep. But if we're now, you know, another few months in, you know, it's just a quick phone call or an email saying, you know, how does your outlook look? And, and, and it's just, it's just another data point for.
And, and if, and if we get another data point, that's fine, because I also read what Janie gives us every month.
Right.
And if you read three different ones, they're all kind of, you know, a little bit different, but they all say we're going down. I think we're getting closer to a consensus that says higher for longer. As opposed to sudden drops. So that's, that's the model that, you know. When I updated it last time, I did it, I, I took our starting point up a little bit, I took the rate down a little bit. But again, we'll see what we have, but if we can get another data point from Devon, I'd be more than happy to entertain it.
Yeah. Yeah, I just figured one more data point, if, if it confirms, or, you know, if for some reason it's way out of whack, that would, you know, that would generate a conversation.
So frankly, you and I can speak offline, whether you want to.
That's fine, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
All right, anybody got anything else? I'll hopefully get back to everybody by tomorrow with the date for the joint meeting, just so we can have our calendars marked. Tonight, and other than that, one more motion?
Motion to adjourn?
Thank you very much, thanks all.
Thank you.